Okay. Ah, no.
Good morning. Today is Tuesday, April thirteenth. Welcome to the Management and Internal Services Committee Meeting. I am Commissioner Malier, and I'd like to open with a word of prayer. Please, if you'll join me. Dear Lord, thank you for this beautiful spring day. Thank you for the freedoms we have, including the right to assemble and to govern ourselves. Be with us today as we make decisions that affect our neighbors and the citizens of this county. Lord, sometimes these decisions are hard, but please help us to make these decisions in fairness and in truth. In your name we pray. Amen. Please join me for the pledge.
Let allegiance to the flag, to the state, to the republic, to God.
Thank you. We have a quorum. Do I have a motion for approval of minutes of previous meeting?
So moved.
Thank you. Do we have any changes to the...
Not to my knowledge, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Any presentations today? I have nothing for the consent agenda. I'd like to move directly into debate. Mr. Johnson, will you get us started, please?
Yes, ma'am. First item for your consideration is service agreements. These two service agreements are with the Family Y and I Care in the total amount of $2,250 each, and staff recommends approval.
Move to consent.
Second.
So moved. Next. Do you have anything else for us, Mr. Johnson?
I believe, no, I may chime in in a little while, but Bernardo's gonna present this one.
Good morning.
Good morning.
The first item for your consideration is the MOU between FEMA and us for the Homeland Security Grant System and the EM Grants Portal. Basically, so you know, we've already done one of these, but it was for the EMPG. This is basically their new system, just to get it up to speed and know how FEMA likes to change. This is basically the memorandum of understanding for us to be able to file for grants. Staff recommends approval.
Move to consent. Second.
So moved. Thank you.
The second is for the agency subscription agreement with AT&amp;T. Basically, what this does is this gives us a backup capability on the mobile operations center. We already have two cards with Verizon, but if we get deployed out into the middle of nowhere, we just are looking for that redundancy. This has already been budgeted for.
Thank you.
Staff recommends approval.
Move to consent.
Second.
So moved. Next.
And finally, bid number 2021009, bid 1313, for the Reed Creek Fire Station Number One Fixed Generators. As you recall, this has been through previously. The bids have come back. They actually came back under budget. Our 15% total is $38,852. Grand total of $259,011. Staff recommends approval.
So do we? We put the money in, and then the state and FEMA throw in it? Is it already sitting there waiting on us to match it? How does that work?
We put all the money up front, and then at the end of it, when we complete everything, they'll reimburse us up to the 15% that we owe.
We've identified that finding.
That is also budgeted, yes.
Move to consent. Second.
So moved. Do you have anything else for us today, Sean? Thank you.
Thanks, Sean.
Internal Services.
The first item I have for your consideration is a revision to our current procurement policy. This revision is dealing with the thresholds for purchasing. I apologize for all of the red lines in it. It's because I reordered or I changed the order of some things, and so I tried to put comments out to the side so you could see exactly what was being changed. But basically, the thresholds have been in place since 2010 at this same level. Our budget has grown significantly since 2010, and so we decided to poll our benchmark counties to see what other counties are doing, and based on that information, we are presenting the revisions as attached. Also, we are finding it harder and harder to purchase things in today's environment. The demand is much higher than the supply, and we're losing out on items. So we feel like increasing these thresholds will help with that. Basically, we are increasing the first threshold that used to be $2,000 where individuals in the departments could purchase whatever they needed up to the amount of $2,000. We would like to increase that to $5,000. The next step is originally from $2,000 to $20,000, we required quotes. We would like that now to be $5,000 to $25,000. The department themselves can obtain those quotes, and it can be verbal quotes, you know, it doesn't have to be a written quote necessarily. We are adding a section, however, for purchases between $25,000 and $50,000. These can be made without formal solicitation using a competitive sealed quotation process that would be done through the procurement department, and these items have to be included as line items adopted in the budget, so we already know what they're going to be, and they have to be purchased within that budgeted amount. Procurement will administer the process, and then approval of the quotation would be made by the county manager or his designees. So that's a new section. And then the final section is we had over $20,000 would require formal solicitation. We're now saying over $50,000 unless it doesn't meet Section C where it was a line item in the budget, then if it's over $25,000, it has to be competitively solicited as well. And then we just changed the other, the negotiated contract amounts to agree with these as well. So instead of $2,000, it's $5,000. Instead of $20,000, it's $50,000. So staff recommends approval.
Are individual vehicles and pieces of equipment, do they have their own line item?
Capital equipment?
Yes, they do.
They do.
The large equipment purchases, trucks, the stuff that come before us generally on Tuesday mornings, would be, would move on through without coming to us?
If it's between the 25 and 50. So heavier equipment, you know, your construction equipment would still have to come forth. But this is really more the light equipment, the vehicles, and that's the area we're really having a tough time making purchases.
I think the other thing for your consideration as well is this gives us the ability to do this, but doesn't necessarily make us do this. If there's something we feel like needs the attention of the board, we would still bring that item to the board. We've done that historically, even things within the purchasing thresholds. If it's something that's a little different, or something we have concerns about, or something we think you may have concerns about, then I wouldn't approve that quotation. I would bring that to the board.
The only thing that I'm concerned about is my hot button is equipment, and so $50,000 is a lot of money. You can buy a lot of trucks. So I don't necessarily believe that I agree with that at this point without just more discussion.
Again, and just for your consideration, certainly we can have the continued discussion, but the item would have to be approved in the budget. So we'll have approved it one time.
Right. But every time something comes forward, it's, well, it's in the budget. I do not care. Do we need it?
I understand.
We got more trucks than Ford, so...
We don't have more trucks than Ford.
Just seems like it.
I understand. Certainly, we can continue to discuss it. We're open to your consideration. We're just, at this point, we're a bit handcuffed, and we're a bit behind with our benchmark counties. We are, we were the absolute lowest on the purchasing thresholds out of all of the benchmark counties. We have been historically conservative fiscally. This continues to be conservative fiscally. We did not go to the higher numbers we saw from some of our benchmark counties. We didn't feel like that fit Columbia County well. For example, some of them have thresholds of $100,000, which allowed the staff to be able to buy equipment and stuff, but we know that this board likes to see that equipment. So really, that $50,000 threshold just kind of lets us buy, you know, if we have a Tahoe or something like that, you know, this is on the lot somewhere as opposed to going through the formal process, which may take weeks or months. But certainly understand the chairman's point and appreciate that.
I think what it would do is gonna cause much more, had to be more transparency in the budgeting process. I'm gonna wanna know what's in the budget and why we're doing it.
Right. Well, they're listed, you know, by line, by department, by line, so those are there. Maybe something that you want to debate further, if the committee wants to debate it further with the entire commission? You could, but certainly up to you.
I would recommend we just table it to the next meeting unless it's handicap something, so we can just talk it more thoroughly, talk it through.
Rather than move it to the debate schedule for next Tuesday?
Quick. This is a big deal to me, the equipment side of it.
Is that your motion?
Not yet. Not yet. I'm debating. I'm discussing.
Sir, if I could too, I think, I think the biggest thing, and I understand all the concerns, Mr. Richardson and I were discussing them this morning. Those concerns are valid, and we can't create shortcuts either. But I think, I think the whole thing that is driving this is the supply chain, and we lack, we lack the agility with what we're doing. So even in the further discussions, if we can find a way to address that, our ability to react quickly with still keeping everyone informed, then that's needed. We're just, we're losing out on operational needs because of the current process.
Right. And I see this as a long-term solution to a short-term problem.
However we want to address that, and that may be true.
I'm assuming if this becomes life, we're all in a bad place, the supply chain issue.
Agreed.
But my gut says, everything else, there's plenty of toilet paper in Walmart right now, and it works itself out over time. So again, again, long-term solution for a short-term problem.
Understood. And that, and that may be where we need to have more discussion. I just know at this point, right now, it's preventing, preventing us to get some of the fire chiefs their equipment they need, and maybe even having to settle for something less capable, ultimately have an operation. But I think we just have to...
How do you see, let's use that as an example. How do you see that playing itself out? The fire chief, having trouble getting the fire chief?
Well, for example, we were, we were looking at four-wheel-drive vehicles, which you never, I would, I would never get an emergency vehicle if it weren't. Rare instances, but we tried to get the Tahos, right, and had to settle, or they were direct, what did they start out as? I don't even know anymore.
I think we found two, but lost them.
But we lost them.
Because of our process.
And those were in the 25 to 50 category?
Right, yeah.
Right, but there's gotta be some type of, without reinventing the wheel, there's gotta be some way to deal with that.
Currently, there's no way to do it unless we bring it to the board. That's the whole issue. It's over $20,000. We bring that to you. We have to go through the process. You could have a special call meeting for that, but that just needs to be cumbersome.
Well, if there's a line item in the budget that says Tahoe, and we have already approved the budget that says, get yourself a Tahoe, and then you have to take two months to bring it back to us through going through all the processes to buy the Tahoe that was approved in the budget to begin with, it seems like a little bit of redundancy for these department heads to be able to do what we've already mandated them to do anyway. And if we can't trust our department heads to make these decisions within these guidelines, then they don't need to be department heads. That's my opinion, whether I should've just given that or not. But if we are budgeting for this stuff, and we are looking at the budget on the front end, for us to beleaguer it later and nitpick it going down the road, that, that seems like, it seems like we're making it more bureaucratic than it needs to be. That's just my opinion.
How much was in the budget for the two Tahos?
Do you remember?
Budgeted 60 each. We budgeted 60 each, and we couldn't buy them for 60.
Correct. We'd still, we'd bring that item back to you.
Right.
There was a lot, there was a lot of discussion about whether that number should be 50 or 100, but knowing this board, we said 100,000 is not the right number, because we know, we feel like we can get most of these vehicles, and it's not just vehicles. I mean, it's equipment too. For example,
Those lawn mowers. Where's Matt?
Matt Lawn Mower.
Lawn mower.
Or hose for the, you know, for the trucks. If we have, if we have hoses listed in there, depending on the availability of the hose and the amount of it, if it's a penny over $20,000, even though it was approved in the budget, we've gotta bring it back. It was budgeted over that.
It was budgeted 60 each.
Right.
So we budgeted 60 each, and there were 76 apiece?
Total.
Total.
So we, that just blew a hole in that argument, though. I mean, we could have, if we had up to 120, we could spend on the two. There's a whole lot of money still on the table, right?
Why wouldn't you want to get them for 70, two for 70, rather than paying one for 60, because you had to wait?
Correct. And if we'd have the ability to buy them at 36, we could have bought them at 36 then, but because we have to bring it to the board, the two that we could have bought for 36 are already sold, and now we've gotta go back to buy for whatever the...
Gotta start over.
The new number. We start over.
I will move to debate, but I mean, I'm a long way from agreeing with this.
Understand. Understand.
I'll second.
Move to debate. Thank you. Next.
We knew that would be a spirited discussion, and we appreciate your consideration.
You know, in six years, we gotta have one.
That's the most fun we've had since I've been here. Uniform Services?
Yes. The next item is a bid that we did for Uniform Services. We have discovered that several departments within the county all use some sort of uniform service, so we decided to bid it and see if we could capitalize on bringing all these together and get a better price. We used stormwater traffic, roads and bridges, and I think one department out of water, maybe, as our basis for this bid and determining if there would be any savings. And there will be. Just based on those numbers alone, we would save about $37,000 a year. The apparent low bidder is Centus of Augusta. That's based on a uniform cost of $7.17 per week per employee, and they have agreed to extend this bid pricing to other county departments that may utilize these services, and so our savings would be even greater. So staff recommends awarding the bid as presented.
Move to consent.
Second.
Now, the, the third number on here, it's over a million dollars. Is that a mistake? Wow. They must've been... Been driving it from Texas. Okay.
Daily.
Yeah, so...
That was Peter Millar uniforms.
We have a motion and second. This is...
But aren't you glad that we can't just do that without asking?
I appreciate that.
And that would have been, this would, this is a case that is $27,000, but even though it was under 50, the process would have still gone this way. You still would have approved this. It's not just a blanket. I know we're past that, but I just want y'all to understand that. You still would've got this approved or disapproved.
Okay, next.
The next item is a contract agreement with Titan Concrete Coating to, to take care of the shop floors with Fleet Services and the floors out at Animal Services. They desire to have a coating put on their existing concrete floors, much like we recently did at the Sheriff's Training Centers, and Titan Coatings is a sole source provider of this system in our area. So we are recommending that you approve that we use the same firm to do the floors out at Fleet and Animal Services, and you see the prices listed there.
Is this something that's mandated? In the description, it talks about Georgia Public Works Construction Law. Is it mandated that we have the floors coated?
No, I think we just put that in there to show that, that Georgia law does state that if it's a public works, meaning a public building, and we need, we need to maintain or repair it, that we can do that under $100,000 without going to formal solicitation. Isn't that why you...
Okay. So this is more about the process than the actual...
Yes, that we are following the law.
Okay. I was wondering if the product was something you had.
No, it's not.
So this is an optional thing to coat the floors?
Yeah, so I will say that this is an item that both, both people ask, or both departments ask for in their budget. Actually, I asked for Fleet to get a price on it, because the last time we were visiting Fleet, I noticed that the floor was in really bad shape. So they budgeted it, and Animal Services budgeted it in their budget, and through the budget process, we identified some existing funding to be able to do it now as opposed to waiting. So I took it out of their budgets and brought it to you now.
And Animal Services is actually using a donation that they received to do their floors.
That's not even coming out of our funding. That's correct.
Were they coating it with gold? Is that what it is? I move to consent.
Second.
So moved. Next.
And the final item I have for you is renewal of the contract with the Family Y Steiner Branch for renting space out at our Exhibition Center. This is the first renewal with a single one-year term, and staff recommends exercising this renewal option.
Are they gonna build a building out there? Weren't they?
They are. They had a five-year plan to do that. I have been in discussions with the present CEO, the Family Y, to let him know that it was, it was our intent that this would be their last full lease term, that we would need the space in the Exhibition Center. We would expect them to build a facility. My understanding is that they're gonna go into a capital funding campaign sometime within the next year or so to look at that, but they know that they are year to year at this point with a total of five, I believe, was the number, and at the end of that five years, they're finished.
Move to consent. Second.
So moved. Technology Services.
The agenda item I have for your consideration today is for a shelter that's really gonna form the centerpiece of our dedicated Wi-Fi pavilion site out in the Winfield community. You're familiar with this project already. We spoke before about putting these sites potentially around the county to enable our citizens in the rural areas to have access to county-provided Wi-Fi. This is for the shelter in the Winfield community. You purchased, you approved the purchase of land for this facility on March 30th. This is what we're gonna put on the land. So we've worked with a, with our purchasing cooperative to get a structure for $47,726.56 from Cedar Forest Products. Even though it's Cedar Forest, this is actually a steel pavilion. It's two-tiered, so it'll have a regular roof and then a raised roof above that. The contract is for the, or the quote is for the company to come put the concrete slab in place and to put the structure there, and then the county will finish out with charging stations, furniture, the Wi-Fi access point, and things like that, basically, to bring it home. The intention for this facility is to have, for it to be up and running before the kids go back to school in the fall, so that they can immediately start using it for educational purposes should they need. Staff recommends, oh, this is from budgeted TAVT funds, and staff recommends approval.
With the land purchase, this 47 plus all that, that staff will put in, what is the total budget for this project?
Total budget for the project is $150,000. Right now, we're gonna come in under that.
Have you already closed on the land?
That's in process right now. Spoke Thursday.
This Thursday? So we have, we're pretty sure it's gonna close, and we'll have it. Okay.
And this will have to obviously go to the Board of Commissioners for approval, so we'll have a little bit of time between that. If something happens, we could pull it.
Michael, can you, as we go forward into the coming years, put together some kind of report for the commission, just see how much usage. I know we have to be able to track it, right?
Oh, we do. Yes, sir. We have it.
Yeah, just that we can understand how much usage the, these units are getting, these Wi-Fi pavilions?
Absolutely. We can go and give you that.
Thank you. Move to consent or second or whatever.
Second.
So moved. Michael, is that all you have for us today?
Yeah, my question.
Mr. Blanchard, is that all you have for me today?
That's all. Yes, ma'am.
Were you on vacation last week?
Going low. I appreciate that.
Are you sure?
I am sure. No servers, no software renewals, nothing like that today, no, ma'am.
I'm sure next time you'll catch up. We'll have plenty.
I've got, always working on something.
Okay. All right. Is there any other items that, that we have? All right. Seeing none, legal matters. Thank you, Mr. Driver. Staff reports. County manager.
First item we have for you is the Personnel Savings Report. You can see where we are and the positions that we have. Would like to take this opportunity to introduce a couple of folks to the committee. I think you know them, but I wanted to still do that first from kind of my side of the house is Dr. Jeff Carney. Jeff, you wanna stand up? Jeff is our new HR Director, started yesterday. Jeff comes to us with over 30 years' experience with the school system and a leadership position, and has already hit the ground running in HR, so he's got a lot, lot to do there. And then our new water utility director, Stacy Gordon. If you'll stand up, Stacy, we appreciate that. Stacy Gordon is a PE. We stole him from a local engineering firm that he was running, and we have great, great plans for him and our water utility, and welcome him aboard too. So we're starting to fill some of these key positions, but you can see that, just for your information.
Stacy, you started yesterday also?
Yes.
Very good. So did the new HR Director get you all signed up well? Did he do a good job?
He's gonna do that tomorrow. Right.
Very good. Thank you. Welcome aboard. Glad, glad to have y'all. Personnel savings.
That's the one we just, I believe. It's just for your information, unless you have questions.
On a page, on our service, under Engineering Services, there's a negative number. How do we end up with a negative number on that one? Roads and Bridges? On us? 8,085?
Yeah, we need to see how, see how that number shook out.
It may be after paying out...
That's what I'm thinking. The only thing we could have done is we had a long-term employee, we paid out PTO, and then we filled the position.
It may take a little while to catch up.
But I'll check on that number, and I'll send you a clarification.
But overall, we feel like this, this bottom line is very, very close.
The bottom, yes. The bottom, the bottom line is close, and these are actual budgeted dollars that will be savings that we'll see.
I have no other questions. Gentlemen?
No questions.
All right. Internal Services?
The first item for your review is the Year-to-Day Budget Report. This is through the month ended March 31st. We should be operating around 75% of the budget, and as is customary, I have listed several of the major funds for your review on the rec sheet. There are no surprises. Everyone is operating well within their budgets.
Very good.
The next item is sales tax. There is a typo on the rec sheet. The local option sales tax number was picked up instead of the special purpose local option sales tax. The actual spot's number was 2,174,442. The percentage is correct. We are at an annualized percentage increase of 16.56%.
Keep up the good work.
Good news. All right. Investment report?
Yes, the final item is the investment report for your review, just showing where some of our excess funds are being held.
Are you, are you able to continue to find good interest rates on, for cash? I mean, not good, but better than...
Interest rates, period.
Yeah, not so much.
We moved the ones we could. We are in regular conversations with our, with our local financial institutions, but right now, we're about as good as we could be.
but right now, we're about as good as we could be.
Pretty good, very good. Thank you. Is there anything else, Leanne?
I said, thank you.
Very good. Do we have any commissioners comment, public comment? All right, I have none, I have nothing for executive session. Executive session, and with that, we will adjourn and come back in five minutes. Thank you.
Thank you, bud.
We're off in the back, good job.
All right. We've already had the invocation and the pledge, we do have a quorum. We were provided the minutes from the March 9th meeting.
Move to consent.
Second.
Okay, motion carried. Any items to add to the agenda, are we okay with the agenda?
I believe it's good for approval, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Any presentations today?
Yes, sir.
Okay, nothing on the consent agenda? All right, we'll move straight into the new business, item A.
Thanks, sir. The first one I have for you is our Phase One of our resurfacing program we're going to do this year, the Bid 2021 113313. This is for a resurfacing of several roads. The roads start on page 46 in your packet. There's also maps that follow to show all those. These are roads that were identified by staff as well as commission. We have a lot more roads to come, however, we wanted to bid out the first batch of them to get good prices so we could make sure our budgets were right. We did have a budget of $4 million for this. Our lowest bidder was Reeves in the amount of $3,212,268. But we came in a lot less than we thought we were going to, which gave us an idea of what our next round is going to be, so we'll be working with y'all to finalize our next round, get that out of bid soon. Staff has recommended approval of this bid.
Motion to consent.
Second.
Okay, so moved. Next item?
All right, the next item we have is alcohol beverage license for Saista 786 LLC doing business as shortstop. Saista 786, apply for an alcohol beverage license to sell beer and wine for off-premise consumption at 4086 Jimmy Diaz Parkway. They have provided all the proper information and posted the property as of March 4th, and staff recommends approval.
Have any public comment or objection?
No, ma'am.
End.
Second.
So moved. Item C, Planning and Services?
All right, first item up is ancillary dwelling at Gibbs, 659 Gibbs Road. What we have here is an existing residence, exceeds the 1,800 square foot. They were wanting to construct a 3,578 square foot home on the property, which would make the current building the ancillary building. And the ordinance allows a maximum of 1,800 square feet for an ancillary building. Therefore, it is before the committee with the recommendation by staff that we approve the forwarding to the April 20th Board of Commissioner consent agenda for the request to exceed the 1,800 square foot maximum for an ancillary dwelling unit on this property.
They got 1,800 plus square foot house, and they want to build a big house?
Big house, bigger house.
And keep the old house?
Right.
And keep it just one parcel?
Correct.
Has there been any neighborhood or public comment?
Nope. And we get these about once a year or so, we've had one in about the last 18 months, so not uncommon.
The smaller house, the older, they'll continue...
Existing house, yeah, they'll continue to use.
Move to consent.
Second.
So moved.
Same thing, just looked at, except for this one is at 6104 Gray Road. It's 19.65 acres, currently zoned RA, similar situation, existing house is there. They're proposing to build a 2,100 square foot ancillary dwelling unit as an in-law suite. So we're okay with it as staff. We did get confirmation from the Health Department, and there's not going to be any impacts to the septic system out there for this new construction, so we're recommending approval to forward to the April 20th VOC consent agenda for the request for the ancillary dwelling on this property.
So for this one, they've got the bigger house and they're building the smaller one?
Right, that's correct.
Move to consent.
Second.
Okay, so moved. Staff reports, legal matters? Skip that, none? Staff reports, planning services?
Attached are the planning department workloads for March, answer any questions you might have?
Questions?
No questions? Next item?
Yeah, the February 21 Plan Review workload is also attached, and we'll answer any questions you may have about that.
Any questions?
No, sir.
Yeah, move forward.
All right, the first report we have is the March 2021 Development Services Monthly Report, and a copy of that is attached for your information and for the... I actually need to be taken on this? Answer any questions you may have?
No questions.
No questions, okay?
All right, and the second one is your financial report, and a copy of that report is attached as well. Information.
Any questions?
No, sir.
And the last one I have is temporary alcohol beverage permits for March of 2021, and a copy of that, all those permits are attached for your information.
Questions there? Thank you very much. Any comments from Commissioners or the public?
Matt, can you just give us a 30-second update on the PCA?
On the PAC?
PACs.
Mr. Prather's here, Mr. Prather, you want to come up and talk to us about it? He can give you a real good rundown.
Morning. We're wrapping up at the PAC as you... bunch list, items for... Matt Jamison received. Part of go up as soon as we...
Parking deck's getting close.
Plaza Park's getting close.
Still did them on our market, also?
Farmer's Market is about 95% designed. Buy a bid. Prices and...
Did they ever do anything with those light, the circle lights that were...
Still working on those.
Working on them. I know you've carried a heavy load, good work. Thank you, very good work.
Thank you, sir.
I will add, just while we're talking about that, that Mr. Prather and also Dr. Carney will be moving to our executive leadership team. Previously, those two positions were on our senior leadership team. We're elevating both of those because of the work they do countywide. So they'll be moving to our executive leadership team, as will our facilities director, will be moving, our ELT. And also, just a quick update on the item that you asked about, it was, that roads and bridges was a large payout. Bonnie Judy was a longtime employee, we paid out all of her PTO, so that put us, it wiped out all the savings for the year. But the way we replace a lot of those people out there, by the end of the year, we'll probably be back even on that particular one, but that was the question that Commissioner Malar asked. We already got the answer, which was good work.
Yeah, that big number on savings is not a great thing, I mean...
It's not, not, it's actually a...
Not filling the jobs. But then you have to question, do you need the jobs?
And I can tell you, as we are out in the field, our folks are doing the very best they can with what they have, and when we're short-staffed, you know, we're still getting the job done, but you have working managers, and that's the way we like to do it, so, yeah, we look at those every year. And as a matter of fact, we had one of those, Mr. Granata just had one of those, and he brought back up and said, this has been open too long, and we questioned it, and he questioned it, we talked about it, and we're going to just do away with it. So spread the work out amongst the people that are already there.
Thumbs up, Sean.
Yep, so, absolutely.
Okay, anything for, nothing for executive session?
Yes, sir.
We stand adjourned.
Thank you.
9:14.
Sean, we'd like to talk to you over here.